Okay, for Monday, December 4th, City of solving planning commission. Call the commission in the meeting to order. Can Aaron, can you lead us in pledge allegiance?
Sure. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, any member of the audience who would like to comment on any matter which is not on the agenda can come forward. I think I have one speaker that would like to speak to us tonight. State your name.
Hi, Mitch Williams. I'm resident in the valley. I don't think of solving property. I live on Alamo Pendleton Road. I'm also a managing partner with Mission View LLC. I've met all of you here once before when we brought our project for conceptual review. And I appreciate the time that you've afforded me this evening. I just wanted to come up and give you guys an update on where we're at on that, the comments that you made in the process that we're going through, and voice a few concerns that we have moving forward with the city. I realize that I can only make comment and there's no response, so I'm not expecting any response. We took all of your comments to heart. We appreciate the time that you took and the service that you all devote to this process very seriously. We went back to the drawing board. We've amended our drawings, made some significant changes in terms of aesthetics. Curb appeal, which seemed to be where the focus was is our last meeting. We believe that we've met with all the requirements of city staff to have a complete submittal package. We're ready to submit. We are going through what we consider to be somewhat troubling in terms of a requirement that the city's placing on our project. I've reached out to one or two of you on the staff in the interest of full disclosure with some of these concerns, and I was surprised that no one seemed to be aware of them, and so I wanted to share them this evening. The city some time ago suggested that they would require us to replace two sections of city sewer down near Willow Drive, quite a distance from our project, as a condition for approval on this project. This is not something that was disclosed to us in our diligence period, although we had at least three meetings with city staff prior to that, in which we specifically asked if the infrastructure, the city's infrastructure would accommodate the project. So this is something that came up after our diligence period was signed off on, and it's quite substantial in terms of cost in order for us to comply with the request of the city. Our concerns are that we are unable to discover or find in any way a published or even a reasonable, in our opinion, logic for this request. In other words, we're trying to find a nexus for this and find another project where this has happened. We're cited deficiencies that are disclosed in a 1988 sewer study for the city, which is the last sewer study that was done. We're told by the public works director that the city's aware of these deficiencies and has been aware of them even before the study was done. And so our next question was, why are we being burdened with providing two new sections somewhere between 500 and 1,000 feet of new city sewer main for a project a mile or so from our project? And were other projects conditioned with the same thing? The answer that we get is that the senior apartments behind us was conditioned with a similar request and complied. Our logic would be that the senior apartments behind us are not in conformance with zoning, they're not in conformance with ordinance for the city in that they were given a 73% bonus density, they were given 45 parking places for 45 units, they're in fact 45 units on three quarters of an acre. So we don't see that as a fair comparison. In addition to that, that was a newly formed lot on a newly formed street as a result of the lot being created. And so really and truly what they did was they provided the sewer for them to hook up to the city sewer system. What we're being asked to do is not only that, and not only pay our fees that are published in the city's ordinance for development, but we're also being asked to construct two new sections down on Willow Drive as a result of a deficiency, and we're led to believe that our project is what breaks the camel's back, if you will. My concern is this, and I've spent a little bit of time looking into this. So were these same requirements put in place, for example, the cottage hospital improvements, which comes through the exact same line that we'll be going through? Were these required of Attar Deck Village, who just in recent years added several apartments and is planning to add more? How many sections of sewer did they replace? Wyndham time shares, which is a time share, but as we all know, is apartments. So the question would be for them, I'm not sure how many, they have quite a few more than we're proposing, how many sections of this city sewer did they replace? Eight homes on Mission Drive, which are approved and under construction, also going, all of these going through the same line. How many sections of city sewer did they replace? The mercantile and New Frontiers, which is going through the same line, and as most of you, if not all of you know, there'll be nine apartments above the New Frontier. So how many sections of city sewer did they replace? Maybe, maybe not on the same line, the Lansby Hotel, which 12 new rooms, 12 new bathrooms, the Water Wheel, 28 new rooms, the apartments at the end of Fifth Street, many other multiple apartments, hotel projects, restaurants, et cetera, et cetera. And so we're, the problem is, is the cost of this makes this project economically not viable. We can't go in with what we proposed, we can't go in with what we have invested our time and efforts into the concept of, which is a Class A, all conforming, both with land use, both with ordinance and zoning, in terms of meeting every condition and asking for no variances. We want to move forward with a project like that. We think it benefits the city. We think that it benefits the community, and it offers pride of ownership for us who live here locally and are invested in this project. So I would ask that you consider these things and discuss them. We're looking for answers from the city. We have, they have been amenable, they've met with us, we've had discussions last Wednesday, met with the city manager, with planning director, assistant planner, Matt Vanderlin, Public Works, et cetera, et cetera. So far, what we're getting is it's non-negotiable with the city. Our concern is that we're left with an avenue where all, our only choices are to protect our investment is to seek some legal counsel and look into the legality of this. We're concerned about that. That's not a road that we want to go down, but that's, we can't find where any of the projects that I just listed for you, in addition to many, many others, had this requirement placed on them. So our concern is, what is the nexus for this requirement? Will new projects moving forward, like Margaret Seize's project on Alice Al Road, will that have this requirement? Will she have to put in additional sewer sections? Will Erling Poles, who's on the agenda tonight for his project, will he have to put in some new sections? Who does and who does not? Where is the nexus, and where do we, as an investor and a business person, find that published? That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Would any other members of the community like to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening? No? Okay, requests for continuance, withdrawals, postponements, recording of ex agenda items, ex agenda items, anybody?
Yes, I'm going to recuse myself from item B when we get to it. I have a business right across the street.
That you do. Okay.
Oh yeah, I will have to recuse myself from Erling Poles' project as I live too close to the project.
And would anybody like to approve the minutes from the previous meeting, have we looked them over?
We do have a continuation of an item here, too. The item 2A has been continued until the first meeting in February. There's been some discussion back and forth between Verizon and the city, and that is the mutual determination.
As it is a public hearing item with public notice, I would prefer that we have formal action of the commission tonight continuing to the February meeting, where we have a record, we don't have to republish and spend the city's money on that.
I move that item, I'm sorry.
2A.
2A.
2A is continued to the February planning commission meeting.
I second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that is continued till February meeting. And now we will hear or act, and act upon the items that are outlined on agenda, which would be number 2A. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's go back to the minutes. Thank you, guys. Would someone like to approve the minutes? Or make a motion to approve the minutes?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of last meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The minutes from the previous agenda meeting are approved, and we'll go to our presentation for the staff report on item 2B.
And I'll recuse myself.
Thank you.
Item 2B is a request on the hearing, on the, hearing on the request, rather, Charlie Schluter of AM Sun Solar for the approval of a conditional use permit to install a roof-mounted PV system, photovoltaic system, on two existing roofs in the TRC zone at 1518 Mission Drive. Our recommendation is that you adopt the resolution that's before you, approving the conditional use permit, and accept the categorical exemption that accompanies this. Background is that this project has been proposed since July 13th. It's been routed internally to Fire and Public Works as well as Planning for Common. It did go to the BAR for review at that time, and it met with approval there. It is a project that, in some cities, does not rise to the level of a major CUP these days. Back in the day, I believe that the intention was that we felt that, for aesthetic reasons, that level of scrutiny was needed to approve solar arrays in the TRC on rooftops. Back in, back in those days, there were often frames, and I would say a visual, certainly a visual impact when solar panels were installed on rooftops. The technology has, has come a long ways at this point, and you have before you some exhibits of how the, how the array will appear from the street. And BAR has determined that there's no negative impact that would require, you know, this to be not allowed in the TRC or as this use. There are some, so that said, there are some fairly clear directions to staff that this requires a major conditional use permit, and so the findings needed to be made, and the process needed to, to be adhered to, which means that it came to you for your review and consideration. There is zoning ordinance consistency with this, as well as general plan consistency, although our general plan doesn't speak a lot to the use of solar panels, especially in the TRC. There are some, some elements that, and goals and some objectives that do meet this project. The environmental determination is fairly straightforward, and you have a, for you, the conditions of approval, and there is also some visuals, so you can see what the, what the impact will be projected to look like. That concludes my presentation. I don't know if the applicant is here or not, but I believe the property owner might be here, and if they wish to say something at this time, this would be an opportunity. Thank you.
Before we do that, does staff have questions of Holly about this?
No.
Nor do I.
This may be a candidate for some revision to the zoning ordinance. As we move forward into the next year, we're gathering our, our list of targets to do some, some minor tweaks and edits, and this may be one of them. We do feel that this may be more effective if it's administratively dealt with, with BAR approval, of course. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment, I think this is probably the first commercial. I was trying to think about any other commercial solar, so that's exciting.
I was wondering that myself, because I, because I'm new, I wasn't aware of any. And if there were some, they were very subtle, which is a good, good improvement. Technology tiles are in there, they're getting to be integrated materials in rooftops, and that technology for, for us, luckily, as business owners and as property owners, is just getting more and more possible. So, thank you.
If the applicant is here, would you like to make a presentation?
We just want to hear you talk, Ben. My name is Ben Olson, and I'm the property owner of the property we just talked about. And we just recently put a brand-new roof on it, and it's kind of dark, black, really. So you really don't see it, and from the Mission Drive, you definitely don't see it. When you drive in from built on to solving, you don't see that at all. It's going to completely chemovlatched. You see a little bit from Copenhagen Drive, you see it there a little bit, but like I said, you know, it's the same color as your blouse right there, so you really don't see it. So, it's probably part of the future. We're going to see more and more of it, and whether we like it or not, we're going to see more and more. But I agree with you, it should not be visible from the street, because, you know, they're not really beautiful on many structures, but in this case, you don't see it from the street. So, appreciate it if you, if you give your okay to it. Thank you.
Can I ask just a question?
Yes.
It's interesting, it's, so it's not on the southern-facing roofs, it's on the eastern-facing roofs.
No, actually, yeah.
And there's plenty of sunshine.
Wintertime, it might be a little bit short, but summertime, it's plenty.
Wow, that's great. Good, that's, that's innovative, too.
Had it been on the other side, it would have been probably a little bit more effective, but we figured out that, you know, that, that would be visible from the street.
I got you. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, open the public hearing on the item. Ask for public comment, anyone? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public hearing on this. Planning commissioners, discussion?
None.
None. Then at this point, would we like to make a resolution?
Want a motion?
Yes.
Well, I'll move approval of PC resolution number 17-4, and to accept the notice of exemption for environmental review process.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. 17-04 passes.
That's it, you're done.
Thank you.
Let me hang on one second. At this time, thank you. We will go to item 2C. Oh, that's right. Can Jack come back in, please?
Yes.
Yeah.
And Aaron is recusing himself. And Holly, would you give the staff report?
Thank you. This is a staff report to consider a lot split, a tentative parcel map, splitting approximately one acre parcel with an application that was filed this May into three parcels in the 7R1 district, and accept the categorical exemption that accompanies it. This is a project that you've seen before. This is, this is a different configuration. It went all the way through approval process, and then the applicant did not go forward, and this is a new proposal, just to keep, keep that in your mind. Their proposed parcel one will be 22,000 square feet, more or less, parcel two, 15,845, and parcel three, 15,812 square feet. There is no, this is not a development plan, this is a parcel map. So they, they are taking the lot, and they are splitting it in three, three parcels. One is existing. It meets all the, the general plan designation in the zone district. These are findings that, that need to be made by the planning commission. This is one of your duties, and it is your duty in most cities that I've worked in, is you consider parcel maps or lot splits. The conditions of approval were, were made with the, with the former project, and many of those have carried forward, just because a lot, the acre is the same. But that said, the, the configuration is different, and one of the, one of the new considerations is access, driveway access to three parcels instead of the, the two that were, that were proposed before. The public works director has made their recommendation on the alignment of that, of that drive approach. The consideration for them, if you look at the map, is that I understand the applicant wishes to maintain the existing drive off of Pine and access the proposed parcel two from that same driveway through an easement, and although it makes sense in terms of alignment, the public works department is, has concerns about increased traffic on Pine. We've heard a lot about that from, from the city perspective, and that was, that recommendation and that condition from public works department arose from, from that particular issue. It meets, as I say, all general plan consistency, that's, that's required as part of the approval process. I think you see where it meets not only housing elements, it does increase some housing slightly. And there is the rather typical protection of conservation and open space where ground disturbance may be involved, some of the, some of the requirements for safety in that regard, in terms of any artifacts that they may find. It is a, it can be an artifact-rich area of the city, so that is a natural condition to have included in that. Findings do need to be made as part of this process, and those are outlined on page five, and they are typical, and all the, this project has met all those findings. At this point, it is certainly physically suitable for that type of development, and the density is, is, as proposed, is adequate. So we, in summary, we have attached revised conditions of approval. There were some from the previous map, but this is a new project, and some of them, some of those conditions carried over, and some of those were, were new, to reflect the, the new focus of the project. That said, I believe that concludes my staff report. I would recommend that we give the applicants agents some time to, to speak to this project. I think that was requested of us, and I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Holly right now, guys? Would the applicant like to make a presentation, please? State your name.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and planning commissioners. My name is Brett Jones, agent for Mr. and Mrs. Erling Poles, who are here in attendance. And I just want to take a minute and thank staff for their diligent work on the process. It's actually quite amazing to have a project submitted in May and be before a hearing body in December. That's unheard of, at least on the county side, so I really appreciate your work.
Thank you.
We, we did have two discussion items, one being the existing drive off of Pine. We do understand the public works director's request to leave that one access just for proposed parcel one, and then the, the other two would come off of old Mission. Our feeling is that really significantly encumbers proposed parcel three, and we would, we would respectfully request that parcel two be allowed to access from Pine Street as well. We did speak to Captain Fiddler at the county fire department, and he is in agreement that he would accept that coming off of Pine for the two parcels. The other request is there's an existing garage on proposed parcel one in the northwest corner that, as part, one of the conditions is that it's, it's right on the rear and the northern or side property line. That portion of the structure was built prior to really the advent of zoning, even in the county, it was built in the 40s. Then there was an extension built that runs north-south, you'll see the L coming off there, was built in the 70s, 71 and 72, with the county. In addition to that garage, we're just simply asking, would you consider allowing that garage to remain as-is? There is a requirement for covered parking that would serve as the covered parking for proposed parcel one. I think that's, Erling, did you want to speak? I'm available for any questions as well.
Thank you, Brett. Erling? What would you like to add?
I'm Erling Poles. Yeah, one old portion that he's talking about there was built, like, say, it was late 40s, that was prior to zoning, that was, my father did that, and then he had a, he got permits for the other part from the county, so there is, that other portion, that wing is permitted the way it was. Evidently, now, it may be closer to the property line than what it's required there on that one wing, as far as that's concerned. The other one is almost, I'd say, right on the property line, because that's the way, you know, he split it at that time. So, anyway, we'd like to leave it if we could.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this point, would any other member of the public like to discuss this or make a comment about it? Planning commissioners, questions or discussion?
I had a couple of questions, and one of them had to do with the water hookup for parcel three. I didn't quite understand that part.
Was that in the conditions of approval?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Which, which one were you referencing? Okay, just to get me there quickly.
Looking for it right now. It was in the conditions of approval on page three, item D4. Talks about relocating existing water service and meter for parcel one, and talks about parcel two, but it doesn't mention parcel three, so that's covered somewhere else.
That is not a question that I'm, I'm able to answer at this point, because that would be more a question for public, public works, and how they, how they configure, how they, how they envision this to be, to be served. That said, if, it would be unusual that they would have overlooked an entire lot and their, their water service. Perhaps the applicant's agent has, has any, do you have any recollection, Brett, of that conversation? I hate to pull you in as the city spokesperson at this point, but I honestly don't, wasn't involved there.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Infondi, my understanding is that parcel three would be required to do its own new service and meter, and then one and two will be combined on a, a combined manifold.
Okay.
So what you see there is the exception to So what you see there is the exception to what would be their standalone service for each parcel.
Okay, so that's probably covered on the next page under item F then. It does talk about a new meter for parcel three. But I just, I was confused between the two sections, so I just wanted to clarify that. So I think that answers my question, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and then as far as a garage goes, are we able to grant a variance? I didn't think we were able to do that.
This is where Roy and I could play tag team a little bit here on this issue. We've talked about it quite a bit, just to clarify, at least in my own mind, how this is handled. And it did come up in the previous project too as a requirement to have it removed or demolished or moved. What you have right here is indeed, I mean, it was permitted, I believe, according to Mr. Poles back in the day, especially the, you know, it's old. And so what was built there was probably built to code and standards at the time. What you have then is a legal non-conforming situation. It might be a use, it might be a structure, but the zoning ordinance views the certain categories of either uses or structures as legal, legal at the time, but non-conforming according to today's zoning ordinance. What drives a change is when a new entitlement becomes, comes into play on that, in that project's sphere. So what we have here is a situation where if he left it and didn't pursue these actions, the garage could remain as is. But because these actions are being taken, that will require us to require that. Now, Roy may have a different way of phrasing that that's more graceful, but. But that's our dilemma and that's our situation. It happens, it's not unusual in older cities especially to have this happen where there's, sometimes it's an old grocery store in a neighborhood or, you know, sometimes it's, you know, it's a use or a building.
Oh, it's not unusual when changes are made, for example, remodeling an existing building to have to bring it up to code. So to me, that's kind of what we're talking about here.
But if the project was legal and it was permitted at the time, how do you punish somebody for trying to split a property?
Yeah, well, the law wouldn't consider that a punishment. The law would simply say that the new entitlement where you're changing the lines and for parcel, for lots splits like this, parcel maps to be approved, technically we're supposed to require that they comply with all the zoning restrictions and that would include setbacks, et cetera. So it's the new lines that require attention. That being said, I think the condition times the removal based upon future development or sale, it's not.
There's been some staff discussion as to the timing of the removal. I understand that the applicant has asked, at one point they asked for it to be used to store construction material for future building. But I think it's a little unclear as to whether or not, who would do that future building or when. There was, I believe the previous conditions required the garage to be removed with the issuance of the first building permit on the adjacent parcels. These are considerations that, you know, these are allowances that could be made in this situation. But the bottom line is, at least legally for us, we are taking the action that we are required to do with, that is being driven by this voluntary change. And this is not the city asking to divide these parcels. This is a private citizen, so, you know, like you say, when, it's like the necessity to sprinkler building. That may not have been sprinkled 15 years ago or something.
But that's public safety, though.
Well, it's all, it's all part of the, it's all part of the law.
Yeah.
And so that's, you know, and treating, and making those incremental changes to make sure that everybody's in compliance as best as possible.
Well, what about the adjacent property owner that is on the other side of that line?
This, the one to the, the one to the north?
Here, the garage, yeah. Existing garage, on either. Right.
Yeah, I'm not aware of what's, do you know Brenda, what's on either side of the?
Maybe Brett does.
Is it a single-family dwelling up here by the garage?
The one, which one?
Up here.
By the garage. It's on the line.
This one here is backyard of some other people's property and this is backyard of another one. They've been filling dirt back in up against this one back here.
That's their single-family lot?
Single-family lot, yes, both of them are.
Got it.
So those owners were noticed about this?
Yeah.
The garage up here, this part here is left right back here, right back there. That, he built that right there. This is the fall apart that was permitted. This other one here is the old one that was grandfathered in. From that corner to there, back to there, straight down.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erling. Want to say another thing, Brett?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. There is also in your ordinance, accessory structures can be permitted now in the rear yard setback. If they meet some conditions, one of those is they can't be in the side yard setback, but they could be in the rear. So the, of this, you know, this garage that we're talking about, the west side and the north side are both on the property line. So, you know, part of it is really, the only thing that's illegal, I guess, or not illegal, legal non-conforming, is the side yard setback on the north side because a detached accessory structure can be approved in the rear yard setback. If, there's a couple of things that needs to be, and quite frankly, I don't know, one of them is the height. I don't know the height of the structure, but I think your ordinance says 12 feet. I'm not sure what the height of this is, so.
Thank you.
Okay, and then one more question with regard to the driveway. What's the objection to using the Pine Street access on the part of the Public Works Department?
The Public Works Department felt that there was, we entertained a number of concerns within, along Pine Street neighborhood about traffic. And that was, his determination was that a drive approach, along Old Mission Drive, would take just a little bit less off of Pine Street if it were accessed that way. There already is a 12-foot dirt road that goes up halfway through parcel three alongside the southern side. So his proposal was that they'd just be extended to access on three and also two.
And County Fire had no objection to that, to continuing to use that to access those two parcels?
No, they did not. They apparently were good with either proposal, it sounds like. The way we, we had, they'd had their discussions with Public Works on that. And then apparently they also had a discussion about using Pine Street too. So they had no objections either way. Just to clarify too about the rear yard accessory structures in the setbacks. I did have a discussion with the city attorney today on another project. And although it is, it has occurred that there have been some occasional projects that have come into the rear yard setback area with accessory structures. We, he has made the determination that the rear yard setbacks do need to be followed for any current or future projects. So although there's the reading, the wording of our particular ordinance in 11122 can be interpreted a little bit differently. That is his determination and we're going to come forward to at least make the clarification on that in the future.
Any other discussion?
Well, I guess just an opinion. I don't see that one more driveway on Pine is going to make that much difference.
I agree, and the building's been there since 1947 and there's two neighbors that have been there for a long time and nobody seems to be having any problem with that.
Well, I'm talking about the driveway, not the garage. The garage, I feel more.
I was adding, I was just adding to it, I'm sorry.
I feel actually more strongly about the garage and it being inside setbacks. And the changes being made here are extensive to divide up this parcel and I think that things should be brought up to code. So I would be in favor of keeping the driveway and using it to access parcel two, but not keeping the garage. I think the garage could stay until construction permit was issued, but for parcel two or three. But I don't know, I don't think it's right to leave it there long-term.
So what I hear you recommending then is that you, you're recommending that condition D8 be stricken then? That's the one that, on the parcel map, provide a 15-foot wide private access and public utility easement across parcel three for access and utilities to serve parcel two. Is that correct?
I guess.
D8.
On the parcel map, provide a 15-foot wide private access and public utility easement across parcel three.
Yeah, if there's a suggestion for rewording, that would be welcome at this time, so we have some clarification going forward and that's fine.
Are we going to change that?
So if we allow the driveway to stay and be done just for parcel two, then we can move the rest of parcel two.
If you, if the proposal going forward would approve the use of Pine, then we will need to ensure that there's an easement granted to access parcel two through that, through that existing driveway, which, I mean, parcel two doesn't exist right now, so.
Correct.
Am I, I believe Roy, if there's, if this is correct, we'll need, we'll need to include language to allow, to require an easement on parcel two that would, no. Because of parcel three, according to their proposed plan, parcel three will be served by this driveway down here.
Looks to me like we'll have to have an easement in favor of parcel two over parcel one.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Jack?
I don't see any problem with letting them access parcel two off of Pine.
I don't either.
I mean, I don't think it's going to be a major traffic thing. If somebody were putting apartments in there, then maybe it would be a problem, but.
Correct.
Most are going to put a single-family home in there.
Agree. Should we, at this point, vote on the resolution?
I would like some determination on the garage and the fate of that, your recommendation. I missed that, but I wasn't.
Well, I mean, what is legal and what is not? I mean, do we have that ability to make, to say, yes, that garage can stay and no, it can't? I mean, how did we get this far with having this come up at this point?
It's come up again and in the previous, in the previous action that was taken, it was, the planning commission took, it was required that the garage be demolished upon the development of the new parcels.
Okay.
And now they've, now the action is three parcels, not two, but the garage remains as the same issue.
So we have yes leeway or no leeway on this?
I'm not going to tell you, you have no leeway. Because when you do these things, what you do is you assess and balance risks. It's not the kind of thing that I would feel comfortable declaring that is illegal for you to make considerations.
Okay. Did you want to address the council again, the commission?
On that garage issue, what I see there is that a portion of it, in other words, the old portion could be torn down and then a portion of that garage that was permitted could still be left there as far as that's concerned. I don't see why the entire garage structure has to be torn down.
I, would you be, would, in other words, to eliminate the old part, but keep this part here and request a modification to the setbacks then to allow this new part to continue?
Right, so that you just have that other wing there left there, which was permitted.
Yes.
I think that's a fine compromise and I could be very amiable to that.
There are minor modifications that could be made at the administrative level and, you know, we're willing to certainly work with the applicant to make that possible. You know, we're not, we're not about just tearing down things just because it's fun. So this will, this will make, I think, a good compromise.
Okay, so do we want to put that wording in to change that, the setback? And the modification of the existing garage and not the demolition of the existing garage?
Modification to the existing garage and, and a, that will, that will eliminate the.
Nonconforming.
The nonconforming, the majority of the nonconforming structure that's in the northwestern setback.
Correct.
And a administrative modification for the remaining.
And there are no plans to build in this building right now, just a lot split. That wording was kind of funny. It says the two new parcels may not be developed by the owner. Really?
Yeah.
Well, that wasn't meant.
They may not be developed by the owner.
Right, they might not.
Yes.
They might or might not at this time.
Yeah. We're already making rules.
It was not a mandate, it was not a prohibition.
Would.
Was there a petition with you or the branch?
Yeah, there.
Which one?
E5.
E5.
Probably just need a, just a quick cover system, all relocated, maybe it's.
Okay, so.
Okay.
That might even say it there.
It was in there.
Okay, there's no more discussion.
Demolished, relocated or renovated.
Would someone like to make a motion for approval of the tentative parcel map 30077?
Yes, I will attempt to do that. So I move that we approve Planning Commission Resolution 17-05 with the changes to the conditions of approval on D8 and E5 as we've discussed. And to also approve the notice of exemption as revised. We got a revision.
Correct.
I saw that. That's everything.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved as with changes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Eric can come back?
Can you make your banquet?
At this point, before we go forward with Planning Director's comments, I have one more request to address the commission. So we're going to kind of go backwards here and back up. And Tracy would like to address the commission.
We have the timer on too.
And we have a five-minute timeline? Oh, three minutes, thank you Tracy.
Hi, I wanted to talk about the TRCs. We were supposed to put a committee together. I did not get a committee notice and nor did I see it on the agenda again tonight. And we wanted to address the TRCs for the. And we wanted to address the TRCs for this community to make some changes. So can you tell me when that would happen?
I do not know. Holly?
We'll be in touch this week. I'll let you know. One of the items I was waiting on was an appointment by the council to an economic development position. And I understand there's a council person who's expressed interest too, so.
Yeah, that person has come to me and would like to have a meeting too, and I think I emailed you.
Didn't get that. We'll get, we'll get together tomorrow, how about that?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Any other Commissioners' comments? No?
No.
The only comment I have is the reason that Mitch Williams was here is he called me with concerns. And I said, Mitch, not my place, if you want to come address, come address. So he took me at my word and came and he may go to city council or do what he's going to do. So no comments on what he said, but that was, I just said, you know, you need to chat with everyone.
That's fine, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you Erin.
And of course, you are all free to come and not collectively, of course, but one-on-one to discuss. And was maybe just ask as a citizen about that project and, or process on how things become approved in the city, so.
Interesting points.
Yeah, just to move on. We did have a mention of accessory structures tonight and that was one thing I wanted to mention briefly that has come up with a couple of projects. I alluded to that earlier. We're looking, we're seeking some clarification as we come into the new year and review the zoning ordinance for possible changes. We think that there's perhaps some flexibility that we need to look at building in to our zoning ordinance. Right now accessory structures are pretty strictly regulated and yet there's been a couple that have, four or five that have been built in the city, big garages, second garages, second structures. And you know, they just meet the lot coverage just by squeaking by. Some of them are above the height limit. We just, we need to get this reviewed collectively as electeds and decision-making bodies to make sure that we are clear with applicants on what can be built. I understand that there are, there's some older housing stock in town and sometimes those garages get pretty small. But that said, do we, do we want to allow second accessory structures? Not tough sheds, but big garages in people's backyards? And if they meet, you know, some of the things that we, some of the requirements we have on the, on the books, is that really what we want to see? So that will be a review that we can do towards the beginning of the year. We also have been talking about the noticing requirements. I wanted to just show you, this is, you're probably very familiar with what the county does and this is what the city of Santa Barbara does in terms of posting notices for development. We've had some suggestions that that might be useful for the community. It would be, however, an added responsibility on the part of applicants and it would be an added responsibility on the part of staff to keep track of that because it really is, it doesn't replace your public hearing notice, but it's in addition to your public hearing notice. And somebody has to go out, figure out that it's posted in that 10-day timeframe, that it's high enough, that it meets the standards. So it's something to consider in terms of letting the larger community know of upcoming action. But that said, it does come with some administrative costs too, so.
I have a question.
Yes.
We mail notices to people within, I can't, 300 feet, 500, it's something. And so what those are good for is people that don't live within that, but have an interest in it and they see them. And you're right, they might have reason to come comment. So maybe it is good for transparency to do that. I hadn't, never thought about that, that we don't do that. We do with ABC licenses, but we don't do it with building and development. That's interesting.
I think the other thing you need to think about too is that if you're a renter, it doesn't come to your address.
It goes to the landlord.
The property owner.
Sure.
And therefore, those who are renting in the area may not know about projects and.
But have a big interest in it.
But they have a big interest in it. Maybe they've been a renter for a long time.
Well, from my past experience, 300 feet isn't very much. And people who live just outside of that radius are going to want to have something to say about it, I would imagine. So I think it's a really good idea to post public notices.
Yeah.
Well, we will investigate that at the turn of the year and see if that has some support, some legs and how we can, how we can develop a process internally to administer that because that, again, is in the other part of that that we may, you know, we may really need to consider for staff.
You know, and you know more than I do, I'm just thinking of the ABC license stuff. We post them and then we like sign an affidavit that we posted them. And if you didn't do that, you can get in trouble. You know, I mean, you could be caught in violation. So you kind of put the onus on the person, I guess, is what you end up doing. I don't know if that works or not, but it does with ABC.
Good point. Anything else? Meeting adjourned.